Good evening, everyone. Zoning Board of Appeals is in session. Today is September 26, 2019. First item on the agenda, approval of the minutes. We don't have any to approve, so we're going to skip that. Second item on the agenda, please.
In substantial change requests lodged at Ames Pond by Allen &amp; Major regarding a variance from the required number of parking spaces.
Could you?
Yes.
Could you get that somewhere where people can see it? The people behind you can see it. Are we still over here?
Yeah, I think so.
Over by the podium?
Usually we do it over here.
How are we guys normally set up?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just explain the application before they get started. You have two cases before you hear this evening, and both of them are in substantial change requests, and these are two comprehensive permits. The zoning board of appeals, you're hearing cases on variances, you're hearing parties aggrieved, you're hearing special permits. This is like the fourth duty that you have, and we haven't seen a comprehensive permit since probably 2008 come through the board, so I think there's only one person remaining who may have been here at that time. And what happened is, is that these two cases just kind of happened to hit the office at the same time, so I wanted to be here this evening to kind of help the board through this process. So what, there's going to be two things that you're going to need to do after you hear the cases from the applicants. The first thing is, is that you're going to have to vote whether or not you find the request to be an insubstantial change. So you need to make a determination, yes, this is insubstantial, or no, it's not. And then the second vote would be, do you approve, if you find it insubstantial, do you approve that insubstantial change? And when we get to that point of the vote, you know, I'll help you through that. What I handed out to you this evening was a copy from the state's regulations when it comes to comprehensive permits under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40B, and that talks about changes after issuance of a permit. So in both cases tonight, you're going to hear of comprehensive permits that have been issued, that the projects have been built, properties have transferred hands, or in the case of the Lodge at Ames Pond, it's been leased out for close to a decade now. So the CMR, kind of, the code of Massachusetts regulations, kind of takes you through what to do if there is a change that is being requested, and the board has 20 days to act once that request comes in. So that's kind of how we got to where we are this evening. And then the second page was kind of referenced under the changes after issuance of a permit, and shows you matters that generally would require a substantial change, or matters generally that would not be substantial changes. So that's just, you know, some guidelines as you hear the two presentations this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Name an address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Ryan Bean Ketto from the company Allen &amp; Major Associates. I'm the project manager here, working on behalf of the applicant Lodge at Ames Pond. I work at Allen &amp; Major, for the record, at 100 Commerce Way in Woburn, and we're the civil engineers on the project. Basically, it's a very simple request. Again, we're asking, as Steve mentioned, for insignificant change request. There was a comprehensive permit that was issued for this project. The project was built, this is an apartment complex. Since that time, the owner is looking to add two dumpsters. So that's, that's the project in a nutshell, adding two recycling dumpsters and some parking spaces. It's that simple. So I have some plans that we submitted to the town. It's just an overall site plan to show here's where the dumpster area is now. We're adding one pad, one concrete pad with a fence to surround the trash. And then we're adding in a couple of parking spaces. We're displacing a couple of parking spaces where the existing dumpster is now. And then when we came to count the parking on the site, through our due diligence for this project, we found they were short by four parking spaces. And so we decided it was important, after talking to the town, it was important to rectify that situation. So that's why we're here tonight, for this request of insubstantial determination. Just going back through the dates to get you in the loop here, the permit was issued in 2007, originally, the comp permit, recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and then since then, there were two other insubstantial change requests, pretty similar in scale. So I'd like to think that what we're asking for tonight is in conformance with that state regulation that Steve handed out, where we're not adding a new building or changing the, substantially changing the whole development, we're adding something that's important, which is recycling center for cardboard. So the residents right now have a dumpster area, have a recycling area, and you can imagine in today's world with all the Amazon packages and Wayfair packages arriving. I know in my own house, I do cardboard breakdown all the time from all the packages my wife orders. So what happened is, it's determined that we really need a cardboard, dedicated cardboard recycling area, and that's what these two dumpsters are. It's dedicated just to cardboard. So there'll be a little slit in the dumpster, and only cardboard can fit in there. So that's, that's the, that's the bulk of what we're asking. Is there any questions from the commission?
So you say you're adding four parking spots, but you're removing two for the dumpster?
We're, we are, let me just get the counts, just to make sure I got the counts right. So the existing area where we're proposing to put the dumpster, there's parking there now. We're simply adding a concrete pavement instead of, instead of batuminous. We're affecting three or four parking spaces total there, and so we need to replace those, those four. And then there is four that we're missing, that we found out in our due diligence, that's another four. And then after talking with the town and looking at the zoning regulations, we determined we could come up and add two more spaces to make sure we're compliant with the current zoning regulations. So that adds a total of 10 parking spaces.
Okay, you've got six over here. You're doing six here, you're doing two here, two here. You're not building the four previously proposed?
We're, we're using this plan, excuse me, I have a code. We're using this plan as a base, and this plan came from an insubstantial change request for this project previously. It's a little bit fuzzy to read, I understand that. So let me answer your question. There's six that we're adding here at the end of this cultus act. This up here just notes where four were missing, they should have been built, but they weren't. And then we're adding two here, we're adding two here. So this note just talks about what was missing, so there's six, two, and two that are being added. So again, a total of 10.
What were in those spaces before?
So there was just, it's grass. We're simply extending the parking that's there, adding two spaces, what used to be grass.
Okay.
Even where the four spots are, that's all grass there as well?
That's correct.
All right, so you were four short on your original buildout.
Correct.
You're losing two for your dumpster.
Oh, it was more than that. It was four we're affecting for the dumpster.
So you're losing four for your dumpster.
Yeah.
So you're adding, you're two and two with your notes up on the top there. You're adding two and two, so that's counts for your dumpster. And then you're adding six, so we're actually gaining two parking spots.
That's right.
At the end.
Exactly. To come up to current zoning.
Will that bring it up, or will that be two extra?
No, there's six they're adding on top of the four.
Mm-hmm.
So that should bring it to where they need.
Well, he was four short. He's losing four for the dumpster.
Right.
He's constructing two and two.
Mm-hmm.
So there's the dumpster. He was short four, he's adding six, so that'll make him...
Two up.
Two up.
They're...
That's right.
They're adding two by building three, adding two by building five, by building seven, four previously, previously proposed spaces not constructed. Are those going to be constructed at that spot?
No.
Or it's the six?
We've determined that's really not a great spot for parking spaces. It's way too close to the building, and there's a drop-off in topography. It just wouldn't work very well.
All right, let's talk about the dumpster a little bit.
Sure.
Do you have any pictures of what you're proposing, or just prints?
I don't, no. It's just paper, both plan view, and then there's some details in the back. Gets into great detail about what materials, what depths of pavement, all those nitty-gritty items.
Okay.
But if I can describe it for a second, there's batuminous parking pavement there now. We're simply saw-cutting the pavement at the limit of construction, nice clean saw cut. We're going to put in new concrete pad for the dumpsters. We're going to enclose the dumpster area with an eight-foot-tall fence. That eight-foot-tall fence will have two gates in the front that'll be accessible for the dumpster truck that comes and picks up the cardboard, and then there is a gate on the side for the residents to access that area. The dumpsters themselves are eight-yard dumpsters. They're going to have a, they're flat-top, they're going to have a slit that only fits cardboard inside of it when it's flattened.
Okay. Where's your existing dumpster now?
There's an existing trash dumpster area here, right nearby. So this makes it nice and convenient that residents drop off their trash, and then they can go drop off their cardboard, accessing both by the sidewalk that's behind, connects both.
Okay. So you have no recycling right now?
They do have recycling, it's just commingled, so instead of dedicating, it's not a dedicated cardboard area. And the volume of cardboard is so great that they need just two eight-yard dumpsters just for that.
I got you. Anything, board members? Just so you're aware, it's regular board members on this one, which is Jerry, myself, and Nancy.
Okay.
I was told I had to say that. Anything?
I don't have anything else.
The associates more than won't ask questions, of course, but voting is actually... Anything else?
No. So it sounds like what Steve is saying is, in conclusion, what we're looking for is one, approval of the project, and two, approval that it's insignificant, if I keep using that word correctly.
Insubstantial.
Insubstantial change request. Insubstantial in that it's not a significant change to the existing development, which we believe it meets that criteria. Again, there's past precedence on this exact project for this, this sort of scope that was voted.
What was your last insubstantial change?
That's a good question. It was, I want to say 2010. Let me just see if I can find the date. Don't have it in front of me, but I believe it was 2010, which was just three years after the initial comp permit.
And you don't remember what it was?
What the scope was of that?
Yep.
The scope of that one was to add 50 parking spaces. Because at the time, reading through the records, at the time, they didn't have enough parking. After they, they started constructing the complex, a couple of the buildings were, were starting to be occupied. They determined that there wasn't enough parking, they wanted to add 50.
Okay. And you still didn't get the four you missed?
Yeah, that was quite surprising when we drove out there.
Anything else, board members? Okay. Be in a public hearing, we open it to the public at this time. Anyone here like to speak? Seeing none. You all set?
Yes.
If someone would like to make a motion to close both parts, we'll have a discussion. Anyone at all?
I'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
Motion's made.
Aye.
And seconded.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. All right, discussion. So Mr. Sadwick was nice enough to give us, and highlighted the laws pertaining to this. I want to say we have something in our zoning bylaw book as well.
We do?
I, I don't think so.
Definitions, maybe?
No, because way back in, in 2005, I think we had comprehensive permit rules and regulations that the board adopted, and I think you were operating under those at the time that the project was approved.
Right, right.
But I don't think that the rules and regulations address, the town's rules and regulations don't address insubstantial changes like the state regulations do.
Right. I, I'm with you. So if you guys want to take a second and read what Mr. Sadwick gave us, we have to make a vote of whether this is an insubstantial change or not. There's a page two on that, too, with what he gave us. This one here, Mr. Sadwick just gave it to you. Is this advertised publicly? Do they have...
No, it doesn't, it doesn't have.
They don't, right?
No.
I didn't think so. Any more information we need from Mr. Sadwick?
I don't have any. No.
You ready to vote? All right. If someone wants to make a motion, we have to do two votes. We have to vote on whether we believe it's an insubstantial change or not, and then we have to vote on the change itself.
So how do I make that motion? The first one, insubstantial change?
We'd have to, we'd have to determine if it's an insubstantial change or not, because if we think it's a substantial change, then we're not going to vote on the change.
Right. No. I'd like to make a motion to vote on the insubstantial change. I'd like to approve the motion for the insubstantial change on Ames, at the Lodge at Ames Pond by Allen &amp; Major regarding a variance from the required number of parking spaces.
No.
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 So I would, if you'd like me to offer the...
Yes, please.
Please.
So the motion would be that the, the board finds that the change presented to be insubstantial.
Thank you.
What's your move?
I'd like to make a motion to, that the board finds the change to be insubstantial at, for the Lodge at Ames Pond by Allen &amp; Major.
Okay, motion's been made. Let's leave that on the table for a minute. So a motion's been made that we find, because we always make the motions in the approval. The motion has been made that we find this change to be insubstantial. That's what we're voting on, just so we're all clear.
Yes.
We're not voting on the change itself.
No.
We're voting that it's insubstantial. So if you believe that it's a substantial change, you would vote no. If you believe it's insubstantial, you would vote yes. Okay? So motion's been made?
I see that it's insubstantial.
I need you to second it first. I need you to second, I need you to second her motion. Motion's been made, I'm looking for a second.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote is unanimous. So now we need a vote on the change itself. So we would allow the building of...
Yeah, I, I think, I would recommend that the motion would be that, to approve the change in parking to allow for the recycling dumpster.
I don't like this way, the way this one's worded, because you're not looking for a variance.
Right, that, I'm trying to steer you away from that, because it shouldn't, it should not have been in the, on the agenda listed like that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, to allow the parking and recycling dumpster for the required number of parking spaces for the Lodge at Ames Pond by Allen &amp; Major.
That's good. Motion's been made. And seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote unanimous. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay. Do we have any information on the 71 Orchard? Yes, we do.
Yep. They're in order. Well, they were in order until you took your packet apart, Rob.
In substantial change request, 71 Orchard Street by Mark and Kristen Tomasetti for a variance to comprehensive permit case 000105 regarding fence height restrictions.
You can slide, you can slide that second mic over, that way you're both on mic, please. Good evening.
Good evening. So we're Mark and Kristen Tomasetti, and we're in the process of purchasing 71 Orchard Street. We technically close on October 15th, and we are looking to see if we can have an insubstantial change to raise the fence limitation, which is right now three feet to have permission to have a six-foot fence. So currently there, in the neighborhood, there's people who have three-foot fences. The house that we're currently in the process of purchasing has a three-foot fence. Other people, for privacy purposes, have put up large bushes, kind of thing. My concern with only having a three-foot fence is, to the right side of our property is, I believe, it's a wooded area, there's a small brook that runs through it, we have two small dogs, and we have a baby on the way, and I'm just concerned a coyote could jump over, you know, the child could jump over and drown in the, the little brook. We did meet the neighbor next door, and she did tell us that behind us, I believe it's Patrick's Way, and people use that as like a cut-through, they come through. And basically, it's just our concern is the safety of, you know, our family.
So this, this comprehensive permit was issued 20 years ago?
Yeah, back in 2001, when the, when the, when the structures were built by the builder.
Was that on the board then?
No. So the comprehensive permit, the copy of it that the board has, on, I don't know what page it is, but it's item K that has the restrictions for further development and improvements, continuing jurisdiction of the Board of Appeals, it's at the bottom of that page, and it talks about exterior side yard fencing shall be restricted in height to a maximum of three feet, and should only be placed from the rear of the lot to a point no further than the front of the building footprint is built. So that, that's kind of the controlling factor here, and that's what the applicants are here, kind of requesting relief from, or asking that the board make a finding that that's an insubstantial change to the comprehensive permit that was originally issued.
Why would they say that?
My understanding of history was that, I think it was something that the developer had proposed, because the lot sizes were so small at that development. And, you know, it may have made sense at the time, but I can tell you that there's probably been turnover of some of those houses, two or three owners now, so there's a very different character makeup of, of the street. And I think, I think what's being presented here with these applicants is, is that there may be some compelling concern about that, what they're calling a brook, it's actually open space, that it was, serves as, almost as a detention area for any type of stormwater that may run off. So you would, and it's above a retaining wall also, so there's about four feet down to that location, so...
We have some pictures here, if you'd like to see them, with, where it shows the retaining wall and/or some of the other...
I would like to see the pictures.
Great.
That fence I'm looking at is three-foot high?
Correct.
No way.
No, depending, which, which fence is it? Can I see? Is it the wooden?
They're both, that's a three-foot high fence.
Oh, yeah, that's a three-foot high fence, yes.
Yep.
You measured it?
I measured it with my tape, 25-foot Stanley Fatmax.
It's a very tiny little fence.
Well, I'm looking at the stack of chairs behind it. You got three stairs, three chairs stacked, and it's still eight inches over it, the The wooden fence is a six-foot, all right?
Yeah, so that's at the beginning of the street, I'm not sure... Yeah, so that's at the beginning of the street. I'm not sure if that house was part of that development, but that was just to show you that there is one house on the street with a six-foot fence. Ours would be a nice white PVC fence.
Was it more yard? There's one. One nice picture.
One of the pictures that's a little blurry.
The one you were driving by?
Yeah.
That's the three-foot high fence.
So that just shows that's where the brook is. So our house, our house is to the left of that.
That's where the retaining wall is. And then you can see in the next couple of pictures, that's, so some of the residents have now planted arborvitae. That's probably 18 feet tall, and they've actually lined the perimeter of their, and that's another same thing where they've lined the perimeter of their property with trees that far exceed the six-foot-high fence restriction.
Those are already six-foot? They, this is a house. They're not sure if this is part of the DeCarols' development. That's definitely a six-foot fence.
Right.
But this is to illustrate that they are there.
The people, the residents there have gotten pretty creative with trying to create a fence barrier with arborvitae or shrubbery and just continuously line their yard to create privacy to avoid that three-foot-high restriction.
Right.
Does anybody else want to look at these? Do you want to look at these? No?
So basically, and to make it simple, we have a comprehensive permit that says no fence over three feet. You want you want us to deem if that's an insubstantial change and put up a six-foot fence?
Correct.
And this again will be a two-vote.
It will be a two-vote, yes. Any more questions, board members?
None for me.
And again, regular board members on this one. Anything else you'd like to say?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
In thinking through this, they're here for 71 Orchard Street. The comprehensive permit was issued for the entire street, so I think that it, if you're looking at an insubstantial change on the comprehensive permit, that it would probably affect all of the properties there. So that's, that's just something that you should take into consideration. There was, there is a controlling factor that's in that condition, which is that the fence can be no closer than the rear of the
Front of the house?
Yeah, and I think, so I think if you can, if you're considering allowing this, that it would apply to all of the houses there. But I think that, that no further than the front of the building footprint as built, I think that's kind of an important thing to keep any type of fencing out of front yards in the neighborhood.
And that, I mean, that's fine with us.
Do you know how many houses are in this development, give or take? Five, fifteen?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Yeah.
That's 32. They proposed 32.
Okay, yeah, maybe it is 32. Yeah.
Somewhere in that range?
Yeah, what happened with that development was, was that they extended it a dead-end street. So Orchard Street was a dead-end street. And then they also built Gab's Path, which connected Orchard Street to Michael Street. So there were homes on Gab's Path. And then there was also one or two homes, I think, on Michael Street that were built. So it's, it's more than what you just see on Orchard Street.
The application was proposed 32. I'm just wondering, because I agree with you.
Yeah.
We're not just dealing with your house. If we, if we approve this, we're dealing with the whole comprehensive permit, which is 32 units. Proposed 32 units.
Quick question.
Absolutely.
Just clarifying something. Is there a statute of limitations on requesting a change or an insubstantial change request on a project?
That's a very good question. You know, I had a quick conversation with senior town council about this, and we were talking about controlling factors and parties, other parties of interest in the whole thing, and the town's interest is on the permit side itself. So a lot of times when when the town permits something, and you just saw this with the Lodge at Ames Pond, we still consider ourselves to retain our rights with the permit that was issued. So in this case, I would say that the town still retains its rights under a comprehensive permit here, so.
So to answer your question? No.
No.
The way I look at that is Mr. Sadwick in his office, if they put it in front of us, it hasn't reached the statute yet. I mean, it's still under our control if it's here.
This should only be limited to those five properties in the those properties were all connected. They're that's what
what Mr. Lasek is pointing out, which is, which is a fair question, is that it should only affect the five properties that were originally listed on the application. But what happened in this instance was those properties were all combined and then subdivided into all of these buildable lots. So when you see parcels 52 and 53 and 122, 123, and 124, that's what existed prior to the development. That's how the application was brought in. Once the ZBA approved that comprehensive permit, there was subdivision, and there was new lots that were being created and then conveyed out. So it, it changed everything there. That was a good question.
What did, what did you find out right now?
That's, um
The second page of the right after the applicant's request, Rob, it was so you have the applicant's request. And then page two was certificate of granting of variance or special permit, April 7th, 2000.
Yep, this one, right. That's page two.
Yeah, it has the parcels listed.
He's got a little map. We need to get his little map. What you found out?
The last page.
You're right. There it is.
I'm gonna need Lasik by the time I get done trying to read it, though.
I'll say poll numbers. Any more questions? We open it to the public?
I have no questions.
All right, we're in a public hearing. We'll open it to the public at this time. If anyone would like to speak? Seem none? Anything else you'd like to say?
No, sir.
If somebody would like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing, we can have a little discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
Motion's been made. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, little discussion on that one.
Yep.
That's a tough one, because you are affecting, like Mr. Sadwick said, you're affecting a bunch of homes. You're setting you're setting a big precedence here. Nothing really calls out, even on the general law, it doesn't call out anything about changing a fence.
No.
Because that's not usually you have done insubstantial changes where they wanted to add a bus stop for the school bus and things like that, or a dumpster. This is gonna this is gonna change the attitude of the whole neighborhood. Anything? Any discussion? No? Want to vote on it? Okay. Got to write it five times, too. All right, so we have to put a vote on it of whether we think it's a a substantial or an insubstantial change.
I would like to make a motion to approve an insubstantial change for Orchid Street.
Orchard.
Orchard Street by Mark and Kristen Thomasetti.
Motion's been made. And seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Aye. So we have two in favor, one opposed. So I don't think it's an insubstantial change. Does the vote have to be unanimous? Probably, right?
That I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. So if we don't know, can we even vote on the next item? The way that vote went is I don't think that's an insubstantial change because that affects the whole neighborhood. We're not just talking about your house. That's a bigger. And to do that without notifying neighbors, I don't think that's right. I think that's a substantial change. Which doesn't mean you can't do it. It just has to go through a public hearing, not go ahead and do it kind of thing.
Yeah, it probably should be unanimous.
I, most of our votes are unanimous.
Right.
All right. So that being said, we're not going to take the vote on whether you can do it or not. Because the board, because we had a vote, calls it a substantial change. Which means you can still do it, but it has to go through a public hearing process. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure Mr. Sadwick has more of these in his hand, and he can show you what, what it means as a substantial change.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lock.
Next item on the agenda, we have I don't have anything on that.
That's for October. What don't you have?
She sent me an email and asked me to continue one.
Yeah, that's the last one on the bottom.
Why she? Oh, it's the same one. Okay, so she did put it on this agenda.
Would you have the first or you can?
Yeah, we can do that one first. Well, I'm sorry, first. We'll do that one first.
JP B R E Ventures LLC for modification of existing variances which are recorded at book 3015, page 195, and book 3278, page 328 to allow two separate single-family dwellings on one lot where three dwellings now exist, as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 155 Pleasant Street, assesses map 47, Lot 39, zoned residential.
Is anyone here for this one? No? Okay. We had, or I received a request through the office that this one be continued to our October 24th hearing. So if somebody would like to make a motion to continue.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the John Ryan for a variance, 4130, appendix B, for
No, no, no. The last one.
That was the last one. Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to
Continue.
Continue. The JP B R E Ventures LLC for a modification of existing variance which are recorded at book 3015, page 195, and book 3278, page 328 to allow two separate single-family dwellings on one lot where three dwellings now exist, as shown on plans filed with the board. Property is located at 155 Pleasant Street, assesses map 47, Lot 39, zoned residential.
Motion's been made. And seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, so that one's continued. All right, so for the next two hearings that we have, let's mix it up a little bit. Why don't you sit out the John Ryan one? And we'll have Ray as the voting member on that one. You don't have to go anywhere. Just, you're not the voting member on that one. And then on the second one.
I'll sit out.
You sit out, and you vote on that one. Okay? So on the John Ryan, it's myself, Nancy and Ray. And on the Pamela Dooley one, it's myself, Jerry, and Dan. Okay.
John Ryan for a variance from section 4130, appendix B of the Tucksbury zoning bylaws for side yard setbacks to construct in addition to the existing single-family home, as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 30 Bonnie Lane, assesses map 92, Lot 21, zoned residential.
How are you, sir?
Nervous. How are you?
We're both the same, thank you.
Oh, good.
I always get nervous. You have an address for the record, please?
John Ryan, 30 Bonnie Lane, Tucksbury.
And if you would, just tell us a little bit about what you're doing.
I would like to build a 28 by 24-foot two-story structure, the bottom level being a garage, the top level being a in-law apartment, I guess, lack of a better term. The reason that I am here is I would like to go to the right of my current house, where there is, you know, I'm gonna be too close to the land. Asking to go within three feet of the town, it's actually the town line. And the reason, and just so you know, I have plenty of room to the left. I'd be within limits, except there's water over there. So I thought it'd be a better avenue by asking for the setback instead of disturbing the conservation, conservation area.
The conservation area, or is it just wet?
It's so there's a stream, and when I had to get the, send out all the mailing, I had to send it to the Town of Andover Conservation Commission. So I believe, I believe that it's
So you probably couldn't build it on that side anyways, because you got your 50-foot buffer zone and all that. It's not 15 feet anymore. That's probably why your house sits so far to one side of the property to begin with. I was stuck. I was stuck on in-law. Go ahead.
So I also would like, I also just think if we went to the right of the house where I'm here asking for it, I think it would look aesthetically, I think it would look better for the neighborhood.
What I started to say was I was stuck on in-law.
Okay.
But what you were denied for was a garage addition with a family suite. That's different. Family suite is different from an in-law.
Okay.
Just make sure if the board does grant anything, that you build a family suite, not an in-law.
Okay.
Family suite has different entrances, um... You're okay with who's gonna live in it? It has to be a family member? That's why they call it a family suite?
My mother-in-law.
Your mother-in-law. But this, the entrances are different. Like, an in-law is completely separate, and a family suite is part of the existing house.
Oh, it would be, I apologize, it would be a family suite.
That's a difference.
Sorry.
I understand you're nervous.
Oh, yeah.
I am, too.
I have some, uh, rough, uh, primary, uh, drawings, if you want to see them.
I want to see anything you have.
Okay.
Anything you give me, though, I'm keeping.
That's okay.
Just so you know.
I also have the, uh,
I don't need your legal notices. Unless somebody wants to see them. We all know they went out.
No, thank you.
Alright, yeah, this is what I want to see. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sadwick.
Aye.
I just want to, um, I want to look up family suite real quick.
I definitely put in-law on the application.
What's, what's on that property line on that side of your house? Is it just woods, trees, a fence?
It's, there's woods in, actually, I have another picture here, when I bought the property. This deck was already on there?
It's okay.
That deck was already on there?
Go ahead, you, show them. Show them. He wants it.
Oh, th- this deck is not on your property, or it is on your property?
Mostly it is.
You have, you gotta stay on the mic for me. Keep talking, you just, you understand the mic. Nope, I know what she's doing, the minutes.
Most of that, um, deck is on my property. I have an aerial view as well, if you'd like to see it, and it basically shows that it goes straight through. So the tree line, if you draw a imaginary line straight down, it goes through that, deck, for lack of a better term. So we've been taking care of that land, assuming it was ours. But according to the, um, surveyor, it's not.
Whose is it? The town's?
Town of Tucksbury.
Town of Tucksbury.
I asked you before I left that area to the, left of the property, Lot number 33 is protected open space.
Which means they can never build on it.
So in between me and my neighbors, we actually connect by a, about a foot of land, I think. And then it's the town of Tucksbury, and it, you know, opens way, way up, so as Ms. Rego was saying, um, there's plenty of land there, but technically where we lived, there's not enough land to build. Did you need a...
Alright, so now that I caught up a little bit, yeah? Let's talk about the map.
Which one?
Lot 33, the one that you're gonna be three feet from?
Yes.
Who owns that?
Town of Tucksbury.
Tucksbury.
There is, like I was saying, there is a gap up front, and I'm guessing on the footage, it's not much, it might be five feet, it might be a foot, but there's actually a strip.
Hold on, man, look. Watch where I get it from. Call it back, huh?
There is a, I was told there is a strip that is owned by e- either myself or my neighbor, um, in the front, on the street. There was, my neighbor told me that's owned by...
But you're fifty-plus feet from that area that you're talking about, where you're building the addition, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right, no, we're just concerned about...
No, not in close.
Alright, so is that Lot 90, uh, Lot 22? Who owns that one?
If I'm looking at my house, that's to the right. Sorry.
Is your addition?
Yep.
Right here, this one?
Um, Eric...
So it's a resident?
A resident, yes.
A neighbor?
Yes.
And then you've got the town of Andover behind you?
Yes.
And that's just open space, because you had to go to the Conservation Commission?
Yes.
Okay. And Lot 33 that Tucksbury owns is deemed open space? Right?
I believe so.
That's...
Yes.
And Lot 20 is another neighbor?
Yes.
Wow. You must look like you have a farm out there, where all the open space.
It's all trees.
Tree farm. I'm still trying to find family suite.
May I ask what the difference is?
What I'm trying to find?
Okay.
It calls it out pretty clearly in the book. And I just... Normally, because you're not asking for it, you're asking for... You're asking for 4130 twice. You're asking for a special permit under 4130, which is the Table of Dimensional Requirements, which doesn't make sense to me. I don't know why you're asking for a special permit for the Table of Dimensional Requirements, that's a variance. I think, I think you need a special permit for the family suite, and you need a variance for the one above it. You know what I mean? If you read, do you have this, the application? Your application calls for a variance under Section 4130. 4130 is the Table of Dimensional Requirements, three feet off the sidewalk.
Right.
Then you're asking for a special permit for the Table of Dimensional Requirements. That doesn't make sense.
Okay.
So that's why I'm trying to, I'm trying to find the family suite thing, because you need a special permit for a family suite. In your description of proposed work, you wrote in-law apartment. I have been reading, and I'm not looking at you, I'm reading. But then you go to the Commissioner's denial letter of the Building Commissioner. It says, "Please be advised, I must refuse your application for a building permit to construct a garage addition with family suite above," in the above reference premise.
I was under the impression that what makes it an in-law apartment is a stove. Obviously, I wasn't talking to an expert.
I, I want to say it's how you get in and out of it.
It is the fire exits, an entranceway, you have to have two.
I have, I'm gonna have three.
I think it's how you get in and out of it. I think they don't want many outside doors. They want you, because it's a family suite, it's a family member.
Right.
They want you to go through the main house to get to it.
So I'm gonna have that option?
Let me find it first. Might take me a couple hours, but we'll get there. Feel free to keep asking questions, board members. I see 4130 is just Table of Dimensional Requirements.
Yeah, it doesn't give you much.
That's it. Well, I don't think the family suite is in 4130.
It is in here. Not in 4130, but it is in here.
4130 is the, just the variance that he's looking for, because he's only three feet from the line.
There we go. There we go, we're getting in there. 3400, family suite. Not more than eight, 800 square feet of floor area, not more than one bedroom. Maybe enlarged with a special permit.
I'm only asking the 672.
Common entries on open decks shall not be included in the square footage. Family suite shall not contain more than one bedroom unless a special permit for a second bedroom by the planning board. Yeah, I don't even think we do family suites anymore. The family suite shall be continuous with the single-family dwelling with direct, direct access or connected with a common closed entry. The family suite shall not have its own front door. Your...
It will not have its... Well...
Your print showed a front door. You said it was rough, but it shows a front door.
Well, but that's going into the garage. Oh, no, then there's a set of stairs, you're right. So I'd have to get rid of that?
I'm not telling you what to do.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just making you aware that, you know, just dunking in a gem, if you're gonna build a family suite, build a family suite.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, if you read Section 3400, there are 17 conditions on a family suite. That's 3400.
And he's not applying for that?
He's, no, not according to this. He's...
No.
He's, I just, I don't understand the special permit.
I think it was just to add the garage and the room above.
Yeah, but it's a special permit under Section 4130.
Because of the requirements to the land to the right, there wasn't enough.
It was a variance. If you read the application?
No, it is.
A variance for the requirements of Section 4130, and then a special permit under Section 4130. If we're just doing the side yard setback, then we don't need a special permit.
Oh, just the variance.
Just the variance.
I think you have the wrong number in here.
Well, what's the right one?
I would say the 3400.
I'm not gonna, um...
But I can't.
Well, if you read it a little bit, it, it calls out the planning board a lot. I'm not sure that, they took a bunch of stuff away from the zoning board. I think family suites was one of them, because if you read this, it does say by the planning board. I read it a couple of times.
Okay, yeah, no, it says it.
We're not the planning board.
Is that because I filled it out wrong?
What's that, sir?
Is that because I filled it out wrong?
Um, you didn't fill out the front page, though, did you? You didn't write in 4130 and 4130?
Yes, I did.
Why?
That's the instructions that they gave me. Plus, I'm not the best to read foreign instructions.
I agree with you.
Rob, on, on the, the Building Commissioners, deny.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing. Well, this was just pointed out. Alright, so what we're gonna do is, on your application, we're gonna scratch out special permit. I'm just gonna scratch it out.
Thank you.
It's easy to take stuff out. You can't add stuff. We can take it out. Alright. I just, I don't like when you come in for something, because it, it takes a month to get here, you're sending out all kinds of letters. I don't, I don't want to just, you know, haphazardly pull something off, and then you have to come back next month. But what we're doing is, we're reading the denial letter from the Building Commissioner. And he just calls out your setbacks.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else, board members?
I don't have anything else.
Want to open it to the public? Yep, we'll open it to the public.
Yep.
Alright, being a public hearing, we'll open it to the public at this time. If somebody's here that'd like to speak? Anyone? Oh, you're all here for the next one, huh? Alright, seeing none. Anything else you'd like to say?
No, thanks, sir.
Okay. Anything else, board members?
I have nothing else.
You're not on this one. You're on the next one.
Yeah.
Anything else? Alright, if somebody would like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing?
Make a motion to close both parts of the hearing?
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, discussion?
I think it's a reasonable request with the, with, in this specific circumstance, with the open space, and it's not gonna affect any other, I don't have a problem with.
I like staying out of the existing brook. We can all appreciate a elderly request on the family.
Yep.
Alright. Anyone want to make a motion?
So I'll make the motion to approve the variance for Section 4130, Appendix B of the Tucksbury zoning bylaws for side yard setbacks. Construct in addition to the existing single-family home, as shown on the plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 30 Bonnie Lane, Assessor's Map 92, Lot 21, Zoned Residential.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
The man has spoken.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
That's the easy part. I gotta pay for it. I make a motion to add some assistance with the payment. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you, good luck.
Good luck. Alright, so Jerry, you're on this one. You're voting on this one?
Jerry and Dan.
Jerry and Dan.
Pamela Dooley for a variance from Section 4130, Appendix B of the Tucksbury zoning bylaws for front yard setbacks and a variance from Section 4142 accessory dimensional requirements to install a 24-foot round above-ground pool, as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 1 Larry Drive, Assessor's Map 45, Lot 24, Zoned Residential.
Good evening.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Pamela Dooley, and I'm at 1 Larry Drive in Tucksbury. I'm looking for, um, and this is, oh, what's your name?
Name and address for the record, please. Talking to the board.
Hi, my name is Owen, and I live at 1 Larry Drive, Tucksbury.
Thank you. Now you're official.
We're looking for a variance from, um, the front yard setback. So 25-foot setback, we've got about 10 and a half feet that we want to put a 24-foot round above-ground pool in back of a privacy fence. We have a non-conforming lot, so the only usable space for our property is on the side of our house, and it goes down into a triangle, so we don't have the land at that part, because it tapers in.
This is for an above-ground pool?
An above-ground pool, yes.
Now, you do have a very odd-shaped lot, don't you? You're on Larry Drive, so the front of your house is to Larry Drive. Does the other... Looking at your print, Pine Street?
Yes.
Is your property above Pine Street?
We're, yeah, we're on the corner of Larry and Pine.
So you're on the corner, okay.
Yeah. So it's very long, but it's, um, it narrows out there towards the front.
Very narrow.
Yeah. It was built in nineteen sixty-five, so I don't know if they thought about that.
It was built in nineteen sixty-five, you said? We had a crying baby here last month. Had a crying baby here last month. We didn't even bat an eye, we didn't care.
You're lucky he's patient.
We actually kinda liked it. Nice.
Shook things up a little.
You said you, the house was built in nineteen sixty-five?
I believe that's when it was built, yeah.
Give a take, right? Can I come look in here? Like forty-one forty-two talks about it being built before nineteen eighty-five or something. I could be wrong. No, accessory dimension.
The home faces Larry Drive?
It does.
What I was looking for was the forty-one thirty-one. Residents that were built before nineteen ninety-two can reduce... Just the side and rear, but they gotta be less than ten thousand square feet, and you're not, you're...
I'm not, no.
Thirteen something. I just read it, thirteen-eight.
Thirteen-eight, yep.
All right, so you're looking for... Because you need twenty-five off the front, right? You're looking for fifteen feet there. The back one should be fifteen. What is, because I couldn't find the map of your neighborhood.
Oh.
What's behind you? What's behind your house?
There's a residence.
All right, so you gotta be fifteen feet off of that. So you're five there. Right, do you agree with that? Four and a half off the back?
No, I think it's more than that. I thought it was ten and a half off the back, but... I thought it was supposed to be ten off the property lines and then fifteen from the dwelling.
Yeah.
No, forty-one thirty.
It's tough.
Forty-one thirty, you're ten and a half.
Lots of ten thousand square feet or less.
She's not, she's thirteen.
All right, the ninety-two. They reduce the fifteen-foot side setbacks.
I think we're good on the sides, for sure.
You meet the rear, right? The rear's ten feet and your ten-five.
Well, that's, I thought it was ten in the back, so, yeah. So I would meet the back if it's supposed to be ten, because it's ten and a half, yes.
The issue is, is the front?
The front to the street.
Where are we getting ten?
So ten feet is, if your house is older than nineteen ninety-two, may reduce to fifteen feet. Her house is not. Side and rear setback requirement to ten feet, providing proof is submitted to the building commissioner.
Where are you reading?
I hear section forty-one thirty.
Forty-one thirty says ten thousand square feet or less. She's not ten thousand square feet or less.
No, she's thirteen.
She's thirteen, so she's fifteen feet.
Right.
No, I understand that.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood. I thought you guys were saying she was fine in the back.
I get you.
Right, so she needs, she needs four and a half feet-ish on the back. She needs fifteen feet on the front. Right?
Yeah, and she also needs the forty-one forty-two variance, which is nothing.
Forty-one forty-two for the accessory building. Okay, as long as we're all on the same page. Do you agree with that?
I do, I do agree with that, yeah. I misread that, I thought it was ten feet. But...
And they're putting... Why are you putting the pool so far away from your house? Not that I disagree with it, I think it's a great idea.
There's a patio that was built up the garage. So it's just outside the patio area.
Okay. That makes sense.
That's the furthest I can put it without it being too close to, because it's corner lot, we don't want it to put too close to Pine Street. So it's gotta be that variance over there, so...
Right. Yeah, you don't even give me a dimension of how far it is off Pine Street. I'm assuming if you print to scale, it's fifty feet-ish off Pine Street.
Something like that, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So in the diagram, it, is that a garage or is that the patio that you were speaking of? Or is the patio next to the di...
So it's the house, and then there's a garage attached to the house.
And then the patio?
And then there's a small patio area as well there. Well, it's not super small, but it's a patio area.
And the whole yard is fenced in?
It will be next week.
What are you doing for fencing? Just, just curious, are you going right down the front of the house?
Yeah, it's a privacy fence along the, um, the front, and then it's gonna be cut up...
What do you call it, a privacy fence?
It's a six-foot, um, white.
Vinyl?
Vinyl, thank you. Whatever it's called, yeah. PVC, whatever it's called.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, so it's gonna go down the side of the house on the, in the front. It's gonna be about ten feet away from the street in the front. And then it's gonna go, not all the way to Pine Street, it's gonna be, I don't know, fifteen, twenty feet from Pine Street. And then in the back to the garage, and then, you know, it's just gonna be chain link in back of the garage.
Vinyl is expensive.
Oh, tell me.
Chain link's not cheap either, though.
Well, I should show you my final bill for the entire construction project.
Oh, I know.
It makes me sick.
So, I'll be honest with you, I, I didn't follow what you were doing with fencing. And I am kinda curious about that. You're coming across the front of your house, about ten feet away, the front?
So where the driveway, driveway is, there's gonna be a fence that's gonna be along the front, on the side of the driveway, and then in the front of the property, that goes around the front of the property on Larry Drive.
Larry.
So it's gonna go, you know, perpendicular to Larry Drive, and then it's gonna cut up... Or parallel, I'm sorry, parallel to Larry Drive and then perpendicular to Pine, and then through the back. It should be a fencing.
Yeah, probably.
So... So it's gonna cut, basically, just like this. And then probably right about there, all the way to the back. This is the garage. That's gonna be chain link, and then that's gonna be chain in the back. So that's all privacy right there.
Okay, gotcha. Yep. All right, so if anyone else didn't follow that, because I was lost for a minute. Coming off the garage, around the pool, back to the garage, right there, all vinyl, and then chain link. Chain link for the dog?
For the dog.
Good choice.
That whole thing is gonna be six-foot, white vinyl fence.
The privacy fence would be six-foot.
Anything else, board members? All right. Being a public hearing, we'll open it to the public at this time. If somebody'd like to speak, come on up to the podium. I hope you all get up to speak to this last case. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Peter Regan, I live at one oh-six Pine Street.
Thank you, Mr. Regan.
I am considering a butter, but truth be told, there's three hundred feet of driveway between my residence and, and the loc, the property's location for this.
Okay.
That being said, I will say that it seems inappropriate on the face of it to have a, an above-ground pool in a front yard. But I'm really here in support of my longtime friends and neighbors who've always been considerate and helpful to everyone and who will be affected by this. So for that reason, I stand in opposition to this variance being granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Betsy Flake-Greco, I live at ninety-nine Pine Street. My husb, speaking for my husband and I, we're both retired, we've been on that Pine Street address for forty years. I'm opposed to granting a variance for the above-ground pool. The zoning laws are in place to maintain the character of the neighborhood, and there's a significant lack of space for a pool in Ms. Dooley's yard. I'm concerned about the noise. The pool would be approximately forty feet from my bedroom, ten feet on Ms. Dooley's property and thirty feet on mine. I'm concerned about the noise from the users and from the filter and other equipment used to maintain the pool. I'm concerned about the size. The pool is listed as a twenty-four-foot pool. Uh, on the drawing, it's only ten and a half feet from my home. I understand if you add a deck, that increases the size of the pool. That would make it beyond the twenty-four feet. I don't know where the deck will be placed or whether that will make it even closer to me. Although Ms. Dooley is putting in a six-foot fence, I don't believe the six-foot fence will prevent the pool from being seen from the street. The pool is four and a half feet high, and then it would be a two- or three-foot decking added to that. That would go above the six-foot fence. Plus, my husband and I own a split entry, so our bedroom is in essence on the second floor. And I don't believe that the fencing will help with the noise coming from the pool. According to pool company's contract, the owner is responsible for the proper placement of the pool. Ms. Dooley and her landscape contractor have violated my property line despite numerous requests from me that the landscape company refrained from doing so. I was assured that any work done on my property would be made right, however, nothing has been done to ameliorate it. The placement is so tight and crucial that I don't wanna rely on Ms. Dooley and the pool company to put the pool in correctly. Although I can understand Ms. Dooley's desire to have a pool, I'm more concerned with the welfare of my family and the fact on my property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maria Haynes, I live at ten Larry Drive. I'm a neighbor of Ms. Dooley and Mr. Eves. Ms. Dooley has done a wonderful job of improving her home value and the beauty of her home with her home project. She has gone above and beyond to take steps to make sure her property, uh... The specifications of her property was looked at. She had surveyors come three different times to survey her property. She met with all of her neighbors and sent out letters. Her yard looks beautiful, and we are hoping to be able to visit. She's a very respectful neighbor, she's a very thoughtful neighbor. Noise is not gonna be an issue. Um, I can speak personally to that. And I recommend that you approve her variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You can speak, you're a resident of Tewksbury. If you'd like to come up, if you'd like to come up and speak. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Desma Curris, I live on Toshin Street in Tewksbury. I'm good friends with Ms. Julie, and my son's best friends with her son. I watched her go through it awful lot to get this project up and going. And because of the odd shape of, the triangular shape of her property, I think she's trying to put in a fun activity for her kids, and, um, the, the, Ms. Haynes is absolutely right. She's done a great job, the house looks spectacular. And she's tried to make it so that it is well within her space. And I understand that it is, it's, it, a, a front yard pool may not be ideal, but because that's the only space she has to work with, that she's trying to make the best with what she's got, so...
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have one quick question. Are you related to Joanne Dooley?
I am.
I'm gonna have to encourage myself. He's gonna have to step in, yeah, it's a little conflict of interest. I apologize.
Ray, you wanna take this one?
My question would be, um... Your neighbor behind you on Pine Street, how close is that house to the property line? Fifteen feet, or is it...
How close, how close is her house to my property line? Honestly, I don't know.
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet?
Thirty feet.
I should say that the bedroom is thirty feet.
Would you mind coming back up to the microphone, ma'am? If you don't mind?
My bedroom is thirty feet. I didn't measure the garage, the garage is closer to the property line. It was not a ward of appeals item, so it, whatever the setback would be, fifteen feet.
You have a split with a two-car garage?
Yes.
Detached, or attached, but it's next to it?
Attached, next to it, yes.
Okay, not your typical under. So your garage is, give or take, twenty-four feet?
Yep.
Would you agree with that?
I would say so, yeah.
Twenty-four? And you're saying your bedroom is thirty?
Yes. Actually, the garage is probably closer than twenty-four feet. The bedroom is thirty feet.
So your garage is six feet off the property line?
No, it's thirty feet and maybe eighteen feet, twenty feet from the property line.
You have her property line, pool, her property line, garage, house.
I'm misunderstanding you. Yeah, the property line, the property line is angled, so it changes the dimensions. So although the garage is twenty-four feet, it's maybe eighteen, twenty feet from the property line, but the property line angles in toward my bedroom. So by the time it gets to the bedroom, it's thirty feet from the bedroom.
I'm just trying to understand how close you are to the... We got the wonder of modern technology, we can pull it up on Google Earth. I, I guess I just don't understand... I don't understand the map.
Wait, it's missing, it's in a little dark.
Yeah, it's a whale. I, I just, I'm trying to understand how, how close you are. And if you look on Google Earth, it, it looks like you're a half a mile away, so that doesn't really help us. With a whole bunch of trees and stuff. All right, thank you. Anything else, board members? Anything else, board members? Anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, I, I, I can't agree with it. Fear.
Talking to the mic. Talking to the mic.
Oh, okay. I, I can't feel with you, uh... I can't feel with your, uh... Thought the, uh, people that put in the... The pool might be put... Might not be put in has shown. And it's hard for me to accept that as a reason for wanting or not wanting the pool in that position.
I'm sorry, the question is, is what? That...
Yeah.
That you... It's concern that I'm not gonna put it in the way that it's planned or...
Yeah, one of her objections was the fear that the person putting in the pool might not be correct in placement. And, uh... I don't think that's a fear argument.
Thank you.
You know... If I were a betting person, I'd bet that they know what they're doing.
I should hope so.
The pool company in their contract said it was up...
Hold on, ma'am. If you're gonna... If you're gonna speak again, which I'm perfectly fine with, you have to come back up and get on microphone, please.
I understand that the question was about the pool placement.
It wasn't a question. It was more of a statement.
Yeah.
He disagreed with your statement of you don't trust the pool company to put the pool where it says on the print.
Right.
He disagreed with you.
Okay, I just that the pool company in their statement said that it was up to the owner to locate the pool properly. And because I have not had any satisfaction with my property line dispute.
What is your property line dispute, if you don't mind me asking? Let me... Let me tell you what I'm thinking first, though. The way I take the statement from the pool company is the pool company's not gonna be responsible for zoning bylaws. If... If the customer comes to the pool company and says, "I want the pool right here, ten feet off that line, ten feet off this line, ten feet off that line", that's where the pool company's gonna put it. So the burden is on the customer to make sure that it conforms to zoning bylaws or it's actually on their property and things like that. But to say that the pool company's not gonna put the pool right here, I would... I agree. I... I... If the pool company comes in and this is where the pool's supposed to be, that's where they're gonna put the pool. That's my take on that. Tell me your property line dispute.
Well, I maintain that the property line was divided by a farmer's stone wall.
Okay.
On the stone wall were drill points delineating the property line. As I understand it, I owned half of the stone wall. Pam Dooley owned the other half of the stone wall.
When you say half, do you mean...
In other words...
Right down the middle? It was directly on the property line?
That's was the... And if on the... One of the plot plans that you have, you'll notice that the line between my property and her property is little circles delineating the stone wall.
What I have for a... For a print is a found drill hole, a set iron rod, and then a found drill hole.
Yeah, we had it surveyed three different times from two different surveyors. And what I was told is that that farm wall, um, maybe when it was placed, that probably was the case, that it was the dividing line, land shifts. It's no longer the case. It actually works to her favor. That, you know, that rock wall has disintegrated in some respects. It's not as big as it used to be 200 years ago. Some of that rock wall is actually entirely on her land. We have set pins. We've got set markers. Yeah, I mean, it's completely laid out. It's got flags all over it and I'm not moving the flags because of this difference in opinion as to where the line is. But the second surveyor that I had come in actually told me that the initial surveyor that I had didn't do it properly, mislocated where my property line was and it worked to my disadvantage for six inches to have my foot onto my property. So what I thought was my property, um, actually it's not. So we will be pulling back some stone, some pebble stone that we had put on there. It's seeded. It's grassed. Yeah, I mean, it's... We dug up seven truckloads of concrete that was buried in my yard, two car frames, um, all kinds of stuff that we had to bring in fill and...
So the dispute is... Just so I understand it, your first surveyor come out and gave you six inches. Put it on the stone wall or on the other side of the stone wall?
No, he said it was probably the stone wall and then the second surveyor that we came in said that that's not the case.
So now on this six inches, did you do improvements?
Yes.
It's not six inches.
It's... It's...
One of the... One of the points was six inches. The other points are significantly larger than that. I have pictures to show you.
What's significantly larger? Because your land dispute is not this board's issue?
Nope, and as far as I'm concerned, there isn't one because nothing's been brought into my attention.
But...
Legally.
Okay, you're right. You're right. You said significantly more. And this will be the last question I'll ask him later. What are you considering significantly more? I don't wanna see pictures, just tell me.
You don't wanna see pictures. Three, four feet, three feet.
Okay.
Um, for about fifteen feet.
I would consider that significantly more. Alright, um... Thank you. Thank you. You said that you still have flags out there? You still have the surveyor markings and things like that?
Yes, sir.
I would like to do a sidewalk. I'd like to go look at this before I make a decision. And that's up to the board. If... You guys don't want to, we can vote on it. But I... I think it deems a sidewalk. I mean, we're all pretty interested in Google Earth. I'd like to put my eyes on it.
You're perfectly welcome to come over.
I did have one more question about the size of the deck for the pool. There are a number of variations in the handout. What size is it gonna be?
It's a small one. I think it's... I wanna say it's like six feet.
Is that... Is that gonna go on the side of the pool that's not going to the property line? So you're not gonna lose another five feet because you're adding the deck on the pool?
Oh, honestly, I don't... I don't know because I was gonna wait. But I mean, if I have to put it on the side of Pine Street, I'll put it on that side. I mean, it's not something I had actually considered at this point.
You know what I'm saying? If you have ten feet from where the pool is and then you have another five-foot deck on it, now you're at the five feet.
Yep, absolutely understand.
I apologize.
But you can ask questions, though, right? You just can't go in. No, if that's... If that's the case, I understand exactly where you're coming from. That's a good point.
What I'd like to do is I would like to continue the hearing until next month. I would like to do a sidewalk. If everyone's agreeable with that. Do I have the authorization to walk on your property?
Of course.
The way we do sidewalks is we go unannounced. We don't go together.
Okay.
Because if we went together, it's a hearing.
Alright.
We go individually and we don't want you talking to us.
I won't even say hello. Can I not even wave?
You give us a little wave out the window. But if you come out to talk to us, it's a meeting.
I understand.
Ma'am, do we have permission to go on your property to look at these property lines? Thank you. And you heard what I said? We'll go separately? So if somebody would like to make a motion to continue, if there's no further questions at this time, we can continue this to our next regularly scheduled hearing, which is October 24th. And that'll give us some time to do a sidewalk.
Make a motion to continue the hearing for Pamela Dooley for the variance for section 4130, Appendix B of the Tewksbury zoning bylaws for front yard setbacks and a variance from section 4142. Accessory dimensional requirements to install a 24-foot round above-ground pool is shown on the plans filed with the board. Set property is located at 1 Leary Drive, Assessors Map 45, Lot 24, Zone Residential. To the next regularly scheduled meeting.
At 6:30.
At 6:30.
Motion's been made. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, my answer's ready. So, um, we're gonna continue to the next... Continue to next month.
Okay.
We're gonna go out and have a look at it. Like I said, please, don't come out and start chatting us up.
That's fine.
Because that turns it into a meeting. That's a problem for us.
That's fine.
And, uh, we'll see you next month.
Excellent. I thank the board for your consideration.
Thank you. Any old business board members?
No.
Any new business board members?
No.
I don't have to say we're looking for new members.
Isn't that great?
That's been a long time coming. Anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion's made. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.